Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, and happy Monday evening to you all. Welcome to City Hall for tonight's regularly scheduled city council meeting. The meeting is called to order. I kindly ask our city clerk to please take the roll call, but before he does so, we did hear from Alderman Cummings and Alderman Maladra, who will not be with us this evening. May so advise.
Mike Bruno.
Here.
Tara Burkhart.
Here.
Don Cummings. Dean Kilburg here. Craig Maladra. Richard Marks. Jim Medecky.
Here.
Mary Sino.
Here.
Tom Simonian.
Here.
Ron Singer.
Here. We begin our city council meeting with the Pledge of Allegiance. I would like to ask, let's see, I'm going to ask Mr. Dave Patzold to please lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance. You knew that was going to happen, didn't you?
Yes. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, unregatta, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
There is no rhyme or reason to the photographs being showed to you on the screen tonight other than to showcase the countless hundreds of photos we received via Instagram and other sources to the city of Geneva. And our communications manager, Kevin Starr, either reposts, publishes, retweets, resends, re-whatever, so these are just some of those that are sent in regularly by our citizens and guests, and I think you all agree, they're pretty doggone cool. And all can be purchased for a small fee to help retire the water debt. No? I'm just kidding. Ignore that comment. Simonian asked me to say that. Item 3A this evening is to open a public hearing on establishment of Special Services Area Number 32, otherwise known as On Brentwood Pond subdivision. I'll entertain a motion to open the public hearing.
So moved.
Motion by Singer.
Second.
Seconded by Bruno. The public hearing on this matter is, oops, excuse me, a voice vote is sufficient. All in favor of opening the public hearing, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Mr. DeGroot, our Director of Community Development, will provide us a brief preamble, and then we will open it up to comments or questions from anyone in the audience and anyone from the dais.
Sure. Thank you, Mayor. I don't know how much of the story makes sense to tell tonight, but I'll try to give a very condensed version. About two years ago, the city discovered that the retention pond in the On Brentwood Pond subdivision was in need of some serious maintenance. Looking into our annexation agreements, our subdivision covenants and restrictions, we found that it was really the HOA's responsibility to be maintaining that pond, and that we did not have an SSA for the maintenance of that pond. So we approached the homeowners back in November of 2014. We had a meeting. About 50% of the subdivision showed up, and we discussed the two options, really to activate the HOA, which had not been activated, and they can kind of collect dues on their own and contract out and take care of the pond by themselves, and then establish a backup SSA in the event that that didn't work out, or to jump right to establishing a special service area and have the city really kind of contract out and maintain the retention pond. So following that meeting, we sent out a survey. We had about a 50% response to the survey, and the majority preferred to go the route of the SSA. We also included three different price points in that survey, the lowest being $3,000 as an annual budget, and with that budget, it would take about three to five years to get the pond into an annual maintenance program. And again, the majority preferred that $3,000 budget. We held a second meeting in March of this year, once we had kind of an updated cost estimate on what it would take to maintain that pond, and we found that at $3,000 a year, it would take probably realistically five years to get on an annual maintenance program. So at that meeting, it was suggested by the residents that we do a second survey confirming that that's the route they wanted to go. We had the same response to that survey. $3,000 was the preferred budget, so that's what we proposed to the city council in July, and the city council adopted that ordinance proposing the SSA, and that's why we're here tonight, for the public hearing. So the purpose tonight, there's no action required by the council, it's just to open it up to public comment. Then there's a 60-day waiting period, and if 51% or more of the owners in the subdivision object, then the proposed SSA would be defeated. If not, we would bring it back to the council in November for action.
And David, just for everyone's edification, how would a homeowner in Brentwood Pond, in On Brentwood Pond, so object if they choose to do so?
You'd file a protest with the city clerk here at City Hall.
It's an objection by 50% of the taxpayers, 51% of the taxpayers and of the voters.
From the dais, any questions or comments? From the audience? Sir, I would invite you to the podium, please.
Oh, I'm sorry.
That's okay. Our process is that you kindly introduce yourself. If your last name is difficult to spell, please do so.
First name is Kim.
Find your address as well.
First name is Kim. My second name is Schmidt, and I was the developer on Brentwood's Pond.
Your address, Mr. Schmidt?
421 Lewis.
Thank you, sir.
And basically, what it is, is we control six lots, five lots, one house, and basically, we have never been ever notified of such a meeting to even begin to discuss this. We turn this over after maintaining that area for 20-plus years at no charge to anyone. Then out of the blue, someone finds it so difficult that they must run to you guys to maintain it. I'd say this is more of an internal problem that should be controlled by the homeowners as opposed to involving the municipality in the overall program. And I would seriously object to this because it's difficult enough to sell homes in there without having to increase the taxes still yet further with no ceiling or no idea as to where they would be going. So do I object to it? Yes.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Would you be willing to answer any questions or comments?
Surely.
Are there any, David, do you want to clarify anything that Mr. Schmidt may have said with respect to notification of property owners within the subdivision?
We did notify all the owners of record within the subdivision, including the six vacant lots, and I think it was BRICS Incorporated.
It's CDC BRICS, yes.
Yes, they were notified. There were two different mailing addresses, and we sent mailings to both of those addresses.
It's amazing. The first notification I got was the meeting, this hearing, the seat. There was a notification of something that was unrelated totally in November of last year, but it was not specific to this issue.
Right, the meeting in November of last year is when we discussed the options, really, either to have the HOA handle it or to go the route of establishing an SSA. And those in attendance chose, and then the follow-up survey chose to go.
And how many exactly were in attendance, though? I understand there were 15. That's hardly a quorum.
We had a 50% response on the survey for the notified property owners.
So in other words, 30 people showed up for that.
Yes.
I find it hard to believe, but nonetheless, there were some people that I did speak to. My ex-wife was there, and she indicated there was nowhere near 30.
Well, unfortunately, both the Aldermen that were present at those meetings are not present tonight.
Right, understood. Thank you for the additional information. Thank you, Mr. Schmidt, unless you'd like to add anything else?
I just wanted to clarify there was 50% there, because I was there the first time.
Okay. Do you want to go on record sharing that, madam?
No.
Either these two gentlemen? Nope. Anyone else from the dais? Anyone else from the audience?
I have a question.
Alderman Burkhart?
Yes. For Mr. Schmidt, actually. Do you mind coming back up?
No.
So this is my first time, I'm new to the councils, this is my first time dealing with one of these. So what would you propose be done instead of a special service area?
I think that as we have stepped, as we had stepped up for many, many years and did any services that were related out of pocket, I think the homeowners should accept the responsibility of within their own realm, controlling their own destiny. It's not that difficult. We're talking about sprucing up some areas where the drains go into the detention pond, a little bit of trimming of trees, you know, it's just a little bit of sweat equity. As far as starting it with $3,000 and then zooming up to $20,000 in five years or whatever, we know how extreme this gets. Once the government starts a taxation program, it perpetuates.
How do we as a-
And like I said, it's difficult enough as it stands. We have five lots out there that have been for sale for some protracted period of time. Well, a lot of it has to go to the basis that Geneva presently taxes homeowners out there. You're paying $10,000 and $12,000 a house out there for a $300 and some thousand dollar house. That's a lot of money. Now you tack on another $500, $1,000, it's just that much more difficult to sell the situation.
Mr. Schmidt-
And it's not just because I have some lots to sell, it's also the homeowners out there who are going to have a bigger problem. I've got a cheap deal to sell, they've got a whole house to sell.
Mr. Schmidt, the rate of levy for the special service area, as notified in the public notices, is $3,000 annual, to be spread over all the properties in there.
It also states in there that it will be adjusted, and it won't be adjusted downward, it will be adjusted upward.
How do we, I'm sorry, I mean, how do we as a city get homeowners to do it, then? It seems like in your absence, people haven't. I mean, that sounds great, they should, you know, it'd be great if homeowners, kind of everybody took a turn or whatever, but it doesn't seem like that's happening.
Well, let me put it to you this way. We have several lots out there which the homeowners fly dump on. We go out and we clean them up, because you people sent us notices that we have issues with materials on our lots where the weeds have grown too tall. Well, the reason the weeds have grown too tall is because the grass can't be cut because of the fly dumping. So let them police up their own house. I think that's a more valid position, and it would make it better for them in the long run. Once they turn it over to a municipality, it becomes a governmental issue which the government will perpetuate in terms of costs, expenses, et cetera.
Seems like it'll be harder for you to sell those lots, though, if this pond isn't upkept and-
No, I agree, the pond should be upkept, but I think it should be a community effort. I don't think that the solution is to come to you guys. It's not your responsibility. It's not you who's plugging those pipes with the clippings and whatever, the branches that they throw in that pond. It's the homeowners. Let the homeowners clean up their own mess. Why should you make it, you know, there are only a certain number, I'm sure, that do that type of thing, but it's the small amount of them that screw it up for the majority. And they're probably the ones that are crying about, oh, the poor pond. Well, that pond is probably, that subdivision is probably the only subdivision that doesn't get water in there because the stormwater was designed with a 40% overage capacity to address all the issues in that group of housing.
Thank you.
Yes, sir. The gentleman in the third row. Please join us at the podium, sir, and then this gentleman in the first row.
Go ahead, Dan.
Again, if I could trouble you to state your first name, last name, spell your last name, and share with us your address, that'd be fantastic.
Tom Medernach, M-E-D-E-R-N-A-C-H, 752 Samantha Circle.
Thank you, sir.
My only concern is if it goes to an SSA, is there's multiple areas that have to be maintained, and as far as, if we can't get together an association, how are we going to determine where that $3,000 would go? Where does it get divvied up? I mean, we got ponds, we got walls, so someone has to make that decision. So that's, where that would go would be, that's a question I've got, and then if it decides after the first year, like Mr. Schmidt said, if it decides, if it's going to increase, do we get a choice? Do the homeowners get a decision on whether or not it goes up or not?
Yes, sir, you do.
We do?
Short answer is, yes, sir, you do.
All right.
And I was going to clarify that for Mr. Schmidt as well, which I know you understand, but the levy under the SSA, regardless of what that levy is, must be approved by the homeowners of record, the property owners of record.
So we'll get a notice to vote on it?
Exactly.
Okay.
Mr. DeGroot, do you want to answer Mr. Medernach's first question with respect to the scope of the proposed SSA?
As part of the second survey, we asked homeowners to identify themselves if they wanted to volunteer to be part of a group that would meet with city staff on an annual basis to kind of develop the scope with that $3,000. I've also been talking with our Director of Public Works. We've been trying to see if there's any volunteer groups that could help us with the initial cleanup, so we can kind of move it along faster than the $3,000 budget would allow, and maybe start building a reserve or some of those other improvements that you mentioned, like the landscape violence and the noise wall.
But for right now, we have no plan.
Right now, we don't. Right now, once the SSA is established, we would get those group of volunteers together to determine the scope for next year.
And Mr. Medernach, before you sit down, I've been advised by the city attorney that I misspoke. I would kindly ask Mr. Radovich to clarify my comments so that you don't leave with bad information. I apologize.
It's always tough to correct the mayor.
It happens regularly.
If the SSA is established after the public hearing, and there's no requisite formal objection to the formation of the SSA, then the city council has control over the levying process of the special service area. What the council has agreed to do under the present ordinances is to limit the amount of the levy to $3,000. Now, I think David has indicated that they'd try to get some input from local residents, but it's the city council's determination about levying the tax. You don't get a veto on the levying of the $3,000.
So you get to increase it every year if you feel necessary?
No, I think that internally, the council has agreed that it's going to stay at $3,000 unless there is some movement within the subdivision itself, the owners, that they want more, and then there'd be a change in the ordinance. You'd have to go through this whole process again.
Yeah, totally understand.
So I just want to make sure that you don't think that you have a veto on the $3,000.
Okay.
So my apologies again for that miscommunication.
Okay, so we're still, but we're still back on trying to determine, once this is established, because we can't, if you can't get a bunch of people to come together to agree on anything, how are we going to determine where the money goes?
And, you know, it's interesting to note, and Mr. DeGroot, please correct me, because I'm on a tear here for being incorrect. This issue was brought to the fore by several of the neighbors who expressed concern over the condition of the pond and its impact on their abutting properties and the overall aesthetic impact on the subdivision. Is that correct?
I'm not totally certain how the whole process initiated.
But I know Mr. Alderman Marks has been in contact with several-
It initiated with Mr. Runch when he was here, and I kind of picked up the project halfway through, so I'm not sure exactly if initiated because of citizen complaints or if it was city observation that the pond needed maintenance. Sorry.
Mr. Mayor, I'd also like to clarify one other thing. The notice of tonight's meeting and the primary purpose of this special service area is to maintain the stormwater management system, basically the one that's located in the northwest corner of On Brentwood Pond. It has nothing to do with any of the entrance features, the walls, et cetera. It's solely for the stormwater management system and the immediate landscaping that might be around that detention basin on the northwest corner.
But I think all those areas were included, and if there was an association in that maintained, that was all-
That might have been the homeowners' association objective.
Okay.
But as far as the special service area and the money that would be committed through a levy, it's strictly for the stormwater management.
Okay.
Okay. Alderman Singer?
Yes, thank you. I'd like to point out something to you in regard to the issue here regarding the cost to the homeowners and the levy. Bear in mind that you may find that the levy is somewhat excessive at its beginning process, but by law, there is and can be a reserve held in that budgetary process, so that in case there is a need for some additional kinds of, oh, repairs have to be done or whatever it might be, the funding is then available for that to be done, so they don't have to come back and assess you at some later date. So bear that in mind.
Right.
Alderman Simonian, then Alderman Kilburg.
Point of order, Mayor, thank you. Can the SSA at some future date be rescinded and taken over by the homeowners' association if there's a vote?
No, not the SSA.
The SSA?
The SSA is governed by statute, is governed by the city of Geneva, the city council, the governing body there. There's a similar SSA function in the county for unincorporated areas, but it's not taken over. The, I think what the mayor was alluding to before is when Fisher Farms was annexed and developed, a part of the annexation agreement included a process where there's a vast special service area for not just stormwater drainage, but for beautification, all the landscaping.
Irrigation.
And irrigation is a part of that landscaping. So the special service area had an expanded use in that situation. There was an advisory board of homeowners that gave the city some of the parameters of where they would like some of that money in the SSA spent. So that's, but this is materially different. This focuses strictly on the stormwater management for On Brentwood Pond.
But at some point in time, can the council, if the homeowners come to the city council and request the council stop the SSA and hand it back to the homeowners' association? Is that-
Oh, you mean that the homeowners would take over the responsibility for it?
Take over the responsibility.
There is a mechanism under the statute. I can't cite it to you, chapter, verse tonight, but there is a mechanism.
But there is a mechanism that allows them to take it back and be responsible for that. Good, yeah, thank you.
I should mention, I think Mary was going to say the same thing, Mrs. McKittrick, that these meetings, and David, you can confirm this, these meetings that the staff had with, and the two Aldermen had with the homeowners, there was no indication that they wanted to activate in any fashion the homeowners' association, so this is the alternative.
Alderman Kilburg?
So my understanding is then that the, this is a $3,000 cap that'll be collected on an annual basis. Doesn't make any difference whether or not the assessed value of the property increases or if there's a bond issue. Essentially, what will be collected will be $3,000 on an annual basis.
Yeah, I mean, I think there's some 60, Mr. Schmidt, is there about 60 properties out there?
Yeah.
60 lots? I mean, without looking at assessed valuation, if you do the simple math, it's $50 per lot, but on an assessed valuation basis, it's going to be different than that.
Yep.
Right, per property, but the thing is, is the total collected will be $3,000.
Correct.
Mrs. McKittrick?
I was just going to say, the way the process works is that on an annual basis, staff will typically look at the system as far as what needs to be done, talk to contractors, the contractor that we've hired to do the work over the past year, see if there are any issues. If there are, then that would indicate that the levy might need to go up. If there are interested residents or a homeowners' association, for example, Fisher Farms, we work very closely with them. They actually put the budget together. We do whatever they tell us to do. We levy for them whatever their budget is. So if there is a group of interested citizens, we would go back to them and say, okay, the contractor this year is saying that next year you might want to up at another $500 to take care of this or that. And if that were the case, then if we were to go forward, then that would be levied for the next year. So it's done on a year-to-year basis, not based on property values, but it's based on needs of the storm sewer system. And typically, as Alderman Singer was alluding to, a small portion of that is typically kept for emergency repairs as capital.
I think the ordinance did also provide, however, that there would, could be an increase based upon the Consumer Price Index fluctuations, so that $3,000 might fluctuate based upon that factor.
Yeah. But it's always based on need, need of the system.
But I don't think anybody's opposed to paying anything. I mean, it's our pond, and we all feel, I think we're all responsible for it, but I just, we just don't, I don't want to see anything get, I mean, our taxes, like Mr. Schmidt said, are high enough. We don't want to, I don't want to see it to continue to increase for something that we don't need, or that we have no control over any say in it. So, and knowing you can't get an associate, it's too complicated to put an association together to where the SSA, if it's going to happen, is the best route, so, but to have some say in it before it just escalates is what I would like.
Well, and I will say, when staff started working with the homeowners, it was our preference that the homeowners' association would be formed and handled that way, but the residents weren't interested, so this is our way of helping the residents take care of that process.
Alderman Sino?
Mr. Medernach, isn't your understanding, though, that this would include the boulevard off a pack and the wall?
I think everybody assumed it was going to be everything, but-
So that's what I, that's my concern, is I think we think this is going to fix that problem, too.
Yeah, I'm looking at the wall along the tracks, I'm looking at the entrance, the wall on either side. There's a couple cul-de-sacs that got grass areas, so I don't know who's going to maintain any of that.
I guess just so everyone's clear.
But if it's just the pond.
Yeah, that's my understanding, it was going to be more than just the pond, but obviously-
And even the pond, even the pond is only got, the county has the overpass. The county's doing absolutely nothing for that. So we're only responsible for what portion of the pond abuts the lots. So I don't know, I mean, I don't know who's going to get to say where $3,000 goes, but that's going to be a lot of money just to pull some trees out of the inlet that comes into the pond. But if that's the way it's written, I'm fine with the pond, you know?
I can tell you that those options were discussed, and that was originally presented to take care of the wall. I'm not sure about the entrance, but the wall for sure, because the integrity of that is a concern down the road. And it was decided by the homeowners that they didn't want the city levying for that, so that's why it's not included. That was at the homeowner's request.
It is going to deteriorate, though, if no one's going to do anything to it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Medernach. This gentleman in the front row. Welcome, sir.
My name is John Bowe. Address 3316 Osprey Court in the Brentwood Pond subdivision. I've lived there, my family and myself have lived there since 1996, so that's 19 years, and never get a homeowners' association. As a group, we took the survey twice. Now, a survey's a survey. To me, it's not a vote, but I was for the SSA. I think we need it for that pond. If it's just for the pond, that's fine, but it's 19 years. That's why we came apparently somehow to be right here. We need help. We can't police ourselves, obviously, we can't get the homeowners together, so I think it's a nominal fee, and I think it needs to be done. It's a start.
Mr. Bowe, your last name is B.O.?
W.E., I'm sorry.
That was maybe my guess, Mr. Clerk. Thank you, sir.
Yeah, that's all I got to say, and once again, I'm, and I think we overwhelmingly voted, took the survey that said we wanted it, so, anyway, I just kind of stopped in there, see if anybody was going to be here in a surprise, so I'll let you guys go back to your business, but thanks for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Bowe. Alderman Singer?
May I ask the gentleman a question?
Of course. Mr. Bowe, would you object to our question from-
Sure, not at all.
Did you feel that what was being presented to you was somewhat an excessive, like an excessive amount as far as the cost?
Not at all.
Not at all?
Not at all. I thought it was a nominal.
Okay. Bear in mind that when the process begins to emerge, it's not just a helter-skelter process. I mean, there'll be requests for proposals sent out there, and whatever maintenance has to be done will be up for a bid, a bid process. And of course, the staff will be responsible for determining who they feel is most adequately prepared to handle the maintenance of that property, and certainly keeping in mind the costs of what it might be. So, you know, it isn't something that's going to be really crazy here in that respect, so I hope you realize that.
Yes, I do.
Thank you for that.
No problem. Like I said, you know, we voted with the survey twice, I think overwhelmingly for the homeowners, but the 50-some people that lived there, it was, I think, two to one. So I don't think they were concerned about the cost.
Yeah, I truly feel comfortable with the direction that your homeowners are moving towards in this sense, because I went through this process some years back in an area of my ward. of my ward, and it was just being neglected and, and there was an attempt by the homeowners to try and maintain the property areas, but it just never materialized in that way, and it just deteriorated, deteriorated until finally something had to be done, and we went in that direction and created an SSA there, and everything worked out quite well.
I think you got the right idea.
Yeah. Well, thank you for that.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else in the audience? Again, there's no action being taken this evening. This is simply a public hearing. The public hearing is still open. If anyone else wishes to speak, whether it be a question, a comment, criticism, now is the chance. I will entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
So moved.
Sino makes the motion and Simoni makes the second. All in favor of closing the public hearing, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Public hearing is closed. Thank you all for your participation. Item four, amendments to the agenda. Are there any amendments this evening? Item five is the omnibus agenda. All items marked with an asterisk are considered to be routine by this city council and can be considered enacted upon with one motion. Is there such a motion?
So moved.
Motion by Bruno, seconded by Simoni. Mr. Clerk, roll call vote, please.
Mike Bruno?
Aye.
Tara Burkhardt?
Aye.
Dean Kilburg?
Aye.
Jim Merdecky?
Aye.
Mary Sino?
Aye.
Tom Simoni?
Aye.
Ron Singer?
Aye.
Motion passes, seven affirmative votes. Two absent, three, excuse me, two.
Three.
Three.
Seven zero.
Let's just go with seven zero. Thank you, Stephanie, for. Item 10, municipal bills for payment. We kindly ask our city clerk to read the bills for consideration this evening.
Total amount for bills for payment is $2,681,641.76.
Mr. Mayor, I move we approve and pay the bills as read. The individual line items that add up to that amount can be found in tonight's packet on the city website.
Alderman Bruno makes the motion to pay the bills as presented, seconded by Alderman Sino. Questions or comments?
No, I didn't hear about it.
Mr. Clerk, please take the roll.
Mike Bruno, or Mike Bruno?
Aye.
Tara Burkhardt?
Aye.
Dean Kilburg?
Aye.
Jim Merdecky?
Aye.
Mary Sino?
Aye.
Tom Simoni?
Aye.
Ron Singer?
Aye.
Motion passes with seven affirmative votes. No nays, three absent. Item 11A, ladies and gentlemen, recommend ordinance number 2015-27, amending Title VI, Police Regulations, Chapter II, Miscellaneous, Section V, Weapons, modifying subparagraph So moved. Motion by Mr. Kilburg?
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Bruno. This matter is on the floor for discussion. Any comments or questions regarding this item? Clarifications needed? Anyone from the audience? Mr. Clerk, a roll call vote?
Mike Bruno?
Aye.
Tara Burkhardt?
Aye.
Dean Kilburg?
Aye.
Jim Merdecky?
Aye.
Mary Sino?
Aye.
Tom Simoni?
Aye.
Ron Singer?
Mr. Mayor, I don't feel comfortable in voting for this issue in the sense that I spent time in Korea during the conflict and I have strong feelings about weapons as such, so I like to rescue myself, if I may.
It would be unfortunately too late to recuse yourself, however, if you'd like to abstain, if you'd like to recuse yourself for the other item, we'd have to kindly ask you for you to leave the room.
Okay.
Do you prefer to recuse or abstain?
Refuse.
Recuse, then?
Well, he.
We can't on this vote, but the next one.
Yes.
Okay, so you want to abstain in this one?
Yes.
Or just vote present?
Correct.
Abstention will be recorded for Alderman Singer. A motion passes with six suburban votes, three absent, one abstention. Mr. Singer, if you'd like to recuse yourself from the next item, then we would kindly ask you to leave the room.
I would.
Okay. So if you could excuse yourself from this council chamber?
Yes.
That would be great. Ladies and gentlemen, we, if someone recuses themselves from an issue, it's not enough just for that individual to sit at the dais, they have to leave the room so as not to present any undue influence, whether it be through body language, stares, what have you. So that's why Alderman Singer's been asked to leave the room. I'm sure all the coffee will be drank by the time this is done, because we went back to the kitchen, so. Item 11B, folks, is to recommend ordinance number 2015-28, amending Title V, Police Regulations, Chapter II, Miscellaneous, Section V, Weapons, adding VI-2-5C, discharge of firearms.
So moved.
Bruno makes the motion?
Seconded.
Seconded by Kilburg. This matter has been discussed extensively, and we're back here again this evening to consider. There are only six Aldermen's, six Aldermen present this evening. It does not, however, negate the fact that five Aldermen need to vote in the affirmative. Six Aldermen actually have to vote in the affirmative, is that correct, Mr. Attorney?
To approve it, yes.
To approve it.
If, if half of the Alderman vote, that is five, then the mayor.
Correct.
Entitled vote.
The matter is on the floor for discussion. Alderman Simoni? And Alderman Kilburg?
Does this, is this excluding the air rifles and air guns? And that's, we're going to discuss that at another time?
Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you.
This pretty much eliminates the language as was the direction of the committee of the whole last week.
Great, thank you.
I was just curious, how, how much input has the staff received from the Aldermen since our Monday night meeting?
We've received three suggestions.
Okay, good. Thank you.
Or email from three sources.
And several, several residents as well. Chief has received directly, yes. Alderman Sino?
Does it specify, is there a place where it specifies what a firearm versus, is that the?
In state statutes, it's defined.
Okay.
Anyone from the audience? Yes, sir. You know the drill?
Bill Peach, P.I.E.T.S.C.H., 1533 Fargo Boulevard. I watched the YouTube video last weekend, I guess on the August 3rd meeting. This is about the air gun.
Yes, sir.
Definition within discharge of weapons.
And that's not being, the air gun, air rifle, what have you, is not being discussed tonight since it's not in this proposed ordinance amendment?
Right.
That language has been eliminated. So tonight, we're discussing strictly the firearms as defined by Illinois statute.
Oh, okay, so, so the, the air rifle language?
That's going to be brought back for due consideration, most likely.
Probably a couple of weeks.
Yeah, probably a couple of weeks. It could be as early as the 24th, but.
Okay.
Most likely in September.
So is there, can I get on the notify me for when that is?
Absolutely. What's, you rattle off, if you're brave enough to rattle off your email address on TV, go ahead.
B.P.I.E.T.S.C.H. at lots, L-O-T-Z, trucking.com.
I will send this to Mr. Peter Collins, and he will include you on the alerts that go out every week that notify you of what's on the agenda coming Monday.
Okay.
That sound good?
Sounds good.
And you can always, you know, text me or call me, or I'll be sure to ignore you. Thanks, Bill. Alderman Kilburg?
If he's here tonight, if he has something to say, why don't you say it?
As long as your comments, though, are not related to air rifles, what have you, because that would be non-German, so.
Yeah, I mean, that's, that's the only thing, really. I, I watched the discussion on the, and I really, I wanted to voice my citizen's opinion on, on, on that, so that was really the only reason.
By all, I almost said shoot me an email, but by all means, you can send an email. And give me a holler, Bill.
Yeah, I mean, you mentioned when it was all, you said in the August 3rd meeting, you said August 10th, but that.
We continue the discussion, and then it was the decision of the committee of the whole last week to remove the language regarding air rifles so that we could clean up the ordinance and move it forward.
Ah, okay.
Discussion regarding air rifles in particular is going to come back for additional discussion.
Right. That's, I remember you got, you put a motion to amend it that day, but didn't, didn't do it, so.
Exactly. So the motion to the table took precedence, and that was what happened, so.
Okay.
Alderman Kilburg?
If you wanted to stay, there'll be an opportunity under new business, and you can share your comments at that point in time after we've taken action on this item.
Okay, sure.
Is that correct?
Absolutely.
Yes.
Anyone else? We have a motion by Bruno. We have a second by Kilburg. Item 11B, Mr. Clerk, take the roll.
Mike Bruno?
Aye.
Tara Burkhardt?
Aye.
Dean Kilburg?
Aye.
Jim Merdecky?
Aye.
Mary Sino?
Aye.
Tom Simoni?
Aye.
Motion passes with six affirmative votes, three absent, no nays. We do not report a recusal, so.
Correct.
If anyone wants to grab Mr. Singer, can certainly feel free to do so. Believe it or not, Bill, we're at new business. Robert's Rules of Order does not permit us to allow commentary on a matter that's not germane to the matter of, but by all means, if you'd like to, yeah, you imagine.
I've been involved in a few. I just, really, after watching the deliberations on the August 3rd, when the police, Honorable Police Chief was up here making comments about the weapons that look like assault rifles or the black rifles, and really just, I'm, I'm concerned about our, I hear other communities have passed this air rifle language, but I heard Alderman Sino mention her, her son to get him off the video game to go out back and, and take some BB gun practice or whatnot. To me, outlawing the air gun, or making the air rifle discharge against the ordinance is, just, just doesn't seem right. Seems like a step too far, because I'm not sure where you start to draw the line if you, if you make that step, so, you know, is it, is it hitting golf balls in the backyard, going through windows? I remember you mentioned something.
Hey, 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 let's not.
I guess, and I can send you some more information, and maybe we can get some more, more citizens to chime in on it, but just want to, I'm just really concerned about taking it a step too far, really.
Thank you. New business, anyone in the audience? On the dais? I will entertain a motion.
So moved.
To go into closed session on the purchase and sale of real property for the use of the public body. Alderman Simoni offers the motion.
Seconded.
Alderman Sino offers the second. A roll call vote is in order. Before we take that vote, please note, no actions being taken tonight on the closed session. Mr. Clerk, roll call.
Mike Bruno?
Aye.
Tara Burkhardt?
Aye.
Dean Kilburg?
Aye.
Jim Merdecky?
Aye.
Mary Sino?
Aye.
Tom Simoni?
Aye.
Ron Singer?
Aye.
We'll return momentarily. Again, no actions being taken this evening, so thank you all for joining us. Microphones are off.